Madam Chair, you have a call.
Good afternoon and welcome to the May 13th meeting of the Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Andrea Boone, Chair of this committee. I am joined today by Vice Chair Dustin Hillis, to my right, the Honorable Amir Farroki, to his right, and to my left, the Honorable Mary Norwood. Can we have a motion to adopt the agenda? So moved by the Honorable Dustin Hillis, seconded by the Honorable Amir Farroki. Please open the vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed, four yeas, zero nays. The agenda has been adopted.
May we have a motion to approve the minutes? Moved by the Honorable Vice Chair Dustin Hillis, seconded by the Honorable Mary Norwood. Please open the vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed, four yeas, zero nays. The minutes have been approved.
At this time, we do have six public speakers. First speaker, Mr. Charles Turner, would you please come forward, followed by Ms. Henri Jordan.
How you doing? Again, Charles Turner, Cary Park resident, spoke at a few meetings here, last couple of, about a month and a half, two months. So I'm gonna be speaking about the same things. But before I start, I want to say thank you to APD Zone One, Allen Holmes, as well as Susan Rutherford, for all the things they've been doing to help us get our community in better shape. So again, we're asking for basic needs in Cary Park, lights, cameras, speed bump, just stuff, just to help with crime, to reduce crime. So again, we've been marking lights, spoke with DOT about where we need new light bulbs and light poles installed to reduce the speeding and crime in our community. Again, we asked for speed bumps. Supposed to be a study done, I was told it'd take 90 days. I told the guys that that would take too long. Two weeks ago, we had a bad car accident where a gentleman and I had to break somebody out of the car. Had bad back and neck injuries. So again, we're asking for basic needs and we've seen documentation that says we have the funds allocated for some of these things, especially lights and cameras. So I don't, I don't know what's the holdup. So we'd like to see more involvement, again, from you, Mr. Dustin, Councilman Dustin Hillis. Another thing I want to bring up is, we see there's a lot of new development coming on the west side, and there's a lot of talks about retail and housing, but we're not seeing anything about food source. So we want to know what's going to happen with, you know, getting a new grocery store in the area as well. So I will end with that, again, just saying, hey Dustin, please get involved, we want to see you more involved, respond to some of these emails, calls. I know you got some people from your team working with us, but we actually want to see you get more involved. We think it'd help coming from the top down. So if you will, get with us as soon as you can. Thank you.
Mr. Turner, I had a question for you right quick. So as mentioned, we, I have allocated half a million dollars for cameras throughout the district, and a number of those were in Cary and Almond Park. And then APD has also allocated money. I don't know if theirs are up yet. I know the ones that I have funded are up and running, per the Atlanta Police Foundation. I spoke with Georgia Power. This entire council allocated citywide money for the next phase of the Light Up the Night program, which is Phase Two. Have you seen Georgia Power out doing any work yet?
I can't say that I have.
Okay. Because I received a verbal promise from them that they would be starting this next phase, the work in, not Grove Park, excuse me, Almond Park and Cary Park. I got a lot of neighborhoods with park in the name. But I'll follow back up with them to see where they are with that. And I'll send you an email following up about the specific funds that have been allocated to your neighborhood and the surrounding areas, and we'll follow up from there, okay?
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Ms. Henri Jordan.
Give an answer to the Spirit of God to everyone that's here. He will keep the feet of His saints, and the wicked shall be silent in darkness, for by strength shall no man prevail. 1 Samuel 2, Chapter 9, verse. The Creator and Sustainer of the earth is also the sovereign controller of earth's history and mankind's destiny. Jesus loves us more than we love ourselves, James, Griff, and you. This people draws nigh to Me with their mouth and honors Me with their lips, but their heart is far from Me. Matthew 15, Chapter 8, verse. The Lord here shows that addition to the Word of God ultimately contradicted. Jesus gives us power to honor you with our heart because our mouths and lips are deceptive. God says, seek to pay the income to Me that you receive from James Griffin obtained by him hacking my computer, my phone, and my house. Then see what Jesus will do. He that justified the wicked, he that condemns the death, just even they both are a combination to the Lord. Proverbs 17, Chapter 15, verse. His Judas omission. I have sinned is not necessarily a true confession of faith. Do you condemn me for seeking to obey Jesus? Will this save your lives and souls? When you justify James Griffin, you will be condemned. Not everyone that stands in to Me, Lord, Lord, should enter into the kingdom of heaven, but he that doeth the will of My Father, which is in heaven. Matthew 17, Chapter 21, verse. Not everyone professing Christ is genuinely saved. Jesus hates sin of unbelief, fornication, homosexuality, lying, oppression backed by those haters of God, et cetera. God made us to serve Him only. We did not make ourselves. Don't ask Me to obey you. Ask Me to obey Jesus, because He created the income, not me. I am just a vessel. I can boast about what I did, but what Christ did in me when I came submissive to His Word and to His will. Christ wanted to use all of us, so some of us reject God's Word and don't love thy neighbor as thyself. God made us to serve Him, and He gave us a chance to repent, and I thank God for being a just God.
We have been joined by the Honorable Antonio Lewis and the Honorable Matt Westmoreland. Next speaker, Brittany and Eric, the Burns family.
I want to say first and foremost, thank you to the council. I did go to the last city council meeting, and I let them know how gentle the committee has been handling us, and Councilwoman Boone, and Councilwoman Dozier. I just wanted to come and just continue to urge for an infant emergency hotline called Carri's Calls. And I also wanted to invite the Public Safety Committee to our first infant CPR training that we'll be having at the Legacy Center in East Point. We would like to invite each member of the committee to speak about the importance of infant CPRs for families. We will have free CPR labs, giving them away, and food. But we would love if anyone from the council, I mean, committee could come out. Sorry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Can come out. And it's from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. The workshop specifically for Carri's Calls is starting at 12:00 noon, but I gave my contact information on the public comment. I'm sorry. It's been really hard. We went to Verizon Corporate and the logs don't match the 911 logs that we got. But it's not us versus, it's not it. We just want to honor Carri's legacy, and we just want to make sure this doesn't happen to other families. So we are just continuing to urge you and thank you, and if you're available June 15th, that would be great, to speak to community members about the importance of learning infant CPR, and the importance of just being a community. Every day is hell. Every day is hard, but the only thing that gives our family strength is knowing that our daughter can save lives is the only thing. We have a one-year-old son, and it's hard to be there for him, but we're trying. So we're just continuing to urge, and we, again, we thank you. We let the entire city council know at the last meeting how this committee has been. We thank you. We thank you. We, all of you, we thank you. Thank you. Please just, if you can, think of an infant emergency hotline, please. Thank you.
I would like to also say that my name is Monteria Robinson. I'm the mother of Jamarien Robinson. So I can stand here and feel her pain because I've also too have experienced the tragic loss of my son, Jamarien Robinson. But today, I'm here in support of the emergency hotline for Carri's Calls. If we had this hotline in place, this would have probably, I'm sure, prevented the death of her baby. So please, you know, support this family by any means necessary. And I just would like to say, thank you all for taking the time out to, just to listen to the community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. At this time, do we have any more public speakers? Do we have any more public speakers at this time? Please give us your name.
L.A. Williams. I'm here from the Cary Park in Almond Park neighborhood. I serve as the Vice Chair, currently as the Vice Chair, and I also serve on the Board of NPUG. I've been living in the Cary Park community for about six years now, and been pushing initiatives towards public safety. Currently, right now, we're having an issue, as Charles stated earlier, with lighting. I am seven months pregnant, and at the moment, driving through this community, once we hit Hollywood Road, it gets extremely dark. In the summertime, we also have overgrowth of ivy and all types of overgrowth that prevent us from driving through the streets appropriately. Now that I'm pregnant and I'm having my first child, when I first moved into this community, I seen it as a benefit, as what I could bring to this community as an educated black woman. Now that I am going to be a mother, I'm afraid for my child to grow up in a community where he'll be woken up by gunshots on a regular basis. I've worked from home, which I don't primarily do, and I've watched a man shoot an AK towards my home, where I dropped to the ground. I was born and raised in Emporia, Kansas. My parents were born on the south side of Chicago. They did not make the sacrifices that they made for me to move into a community that I can't advocate for myself and don't feel safe walking through the streets. Zone One, APD has done an amazing job with what they have, but of course, the resources are limited. We're asking for just lighting in our community. I myself have gone out and marked streetlights, and I know Dustin, you're saying that they're gonna come, but we've been pushing for this time and time again. And I do not want to raise my child in a dark community where all the dirt goes down in the dark. APD is stretched thin. Zone One is huge, and they only have so many people. Major Mormon does what he can, everyone is doing what they can, but we're just asking for lighting, just streetlights. We can't go to a public park because there is no lights. This park is not even two years old at this point, but why would you structure a park without proper lighting? My kid cannot go and play at this park because there is no lighting, or if they do, we have to leave in a timely manner. We also fear being shot up or being held at gunpoint. This happens in our community, where we're blocked, we're about less than a mile away from Riverside, which is a beautiful and thriving community, and we want the same. And I think we deserve the same as a predominantly black community, and I'm just here advocating for us and then all at one time. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I want to welcome our new city attorney, Ms. Patrice Perkins-Hucker. Could you just come up and just say hello to the Public Safety Committee? Your office is under our purview, so welcome to Atlanta City Hall.
Yes, Madam Chair. Exactly why I'm here today, because this is the very first week. I started on Thursday, and this is your fair, the meeting, the very first meeting that you've had since I've been here. I'm looking forward to working with the team at the Law Department, and I wanted you to know that I am personally interested in what you all need, and any types of comments or feedback that you might like to give to me with regard to the operations and the support of our staff. I would, we are under your purview, we will be making reports to you as well, but I wanted you to see my face. Some of you know me, many of you know me, but I just wanted to be here to see if you had any questions, if you had any ideas you wanted to give me on this date.
Welcome, welcome, welcome. Thank you. I know we'll be circling back around individually, but welcome, and thank you so much for serving the city of Atlanta again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will have our quarterly reports. First, Atlanta Police Department Chief Darren Sheerbaum.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the PSLA. Thank you, as always, for your service to our city and your support of the men and women of the Police Department. I do want to start, before I give my presentation, if I may, Madam Chair, on the last few months' efforts of the department, to speak on two significant events that happened in our city over the weekend, to make sure that you, which were aware, and the members of the public may be watching. As you're aware, as we stand here today at City Hall, we have two officers of our department that continue to recover from gunshot wounds at Grady Memorial Hospital. Those officers and other members of Zone Three were called to a neighborhood where we had a minimum of two reports of an individual armed with a handgun that was threatening others. When they arrived in that neighborhood, that's exactly what they encountered. Despite a lengthy effort to resolve that situation, there was an exchange of gunfire, which unfortunately, we never want the loss of any life on our call, did lead to the death of the individual that was threatening citizens with a gun, but also led to three of our officers being injured by gunfire. And I want the citizens of Atlanta to know, we expect a full recovery of the two officers that remain under medical care. One has been released, and the others are extraordinary men and women at Grady Hospital. We're just so fortunate to have them here in our city, provides care. We are also caring for the family members who have gathered here in our city from across the region and out of state, whose loved ones protect our city, and just know that they are being fully supported and cared for. The GBI does have a full investigation that will bring the facts forward, but every day, every day, men and women of this department are placing themselves in situations where guns are posing a threat because they're in the wrong hands, and guns are present because they're being used for the wrong reasons. And while on Saturday, we had three members of this department shot, each and every day, that risk is present, and I just want to commend the men and women that serve the city, that never say no when the call comes out. And just that the officers that they're hearing my report out today know they have the full support of their chief of police and all the command staff. We saw another example of gun violence in our city. That happened at a nightclub, Club 1145, in the northern part of our city. And while that investigation is very active, I can share this, we do know at this moment that there was one shooter inside that establishment, and that one shooter intended to cause one other person harm inside. And in doing so, that weapon was discharged, and there were a number of people that were in close proximity that were also struck by those rounds. One did not survive, the individual that was being targeted did not survive. And then we have four citizens that are now recovering also at local hospitals. The investigation is very active. I was briefed on it again this morning, and I'm confident that very shortly, we can let this body in Atlanta know who we believe committed that crime, who we believe has caused that neighborhood to feel less safe, and we will have them before a court of Fulton County to hold them accountable. And that is the priority of this department, that if you're going to use guns to harm people, that you will be held responsible, we will put you before court. And so that will happen, I believe, very shortly. Our officers have been working tirelessly since that tragedy unfolded to make sure we have that individual in custody before court. And so we will keep you all updated, Madam Chair, as we make progress in that case.
Honorable Antonio Lewis.
Can you please update us on the death of Rodney Thompson, who was also murdered last week on Cleveland Avenue? I know you and I have been talking about it, but that's a top priority to the city of Atlanta as well. Please make sure we are...
Yes, sir, we've issued an arrest warrant in that case. That individual is actively being sought by this department. Once our fugitive unit has exhausted all their avenues, we will turn to the public's help for identifying them, but you know an arrest warrant has been issued in that case, sir.
Thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
Chief, question, what council district, the incident at the nightclub, what council district was that in?
I'll get that for you, ma'am. I'm not sure if that's in Mr. Shooks or Ms. Norwood's, but I'll get that for you. Okay, yes.
Thank you.
I don't have my map in front of me, ma'am, so I apologize.
The Peachtree Road and Roswell Road are the dividing lines between Seven and Eight. So it's just starting at Brookwood Station, you just come straight up Peachtree, and then straight up Roswell. Everything to the west is me, everything to the east is Howard. Thank you. Please proceed.
I'm going to start by giving you an update on our efforts to combat crime in the city. Those that are under the purview of the Police Department, we need help, obviously, from many partners. We heard Georgia Power mentioned just a short while ago, the importance of having well-lit neighborhoods, and that is an important part of what we do. Give you an update, this is the conclusion of Week 18 of the year, which is May 4th is when it concludes. You can see a snapshot of where we stand for year-to-date, is the far-right column. And I know there was a request from this committee to have the Cobra Report every time we present, we'll make sure that is provided as we have the bi-weekly reportouts. As you can see, we continue to have a reduction around crimes against persons and even robberies. The FBI puts robbery as a crime against property. We tend to disagree, but we're not going to debate the bureaucracy of crime, but we can see that, which historically had been the number-two motivator for homicides in a city, also sees a reduction as well. For, for the first time in months, we're able to start seeing a reduction in auto thefts in our city. For well over a year, that just increased and increased as the thefts have key as an high on days, which started in the upper Midwest, reached our city as well. We're starting to see a reduction in that. I'll get into a short little bit later why we think that may be occurring, but public education is certainly one of those areas. We're also happy to see car break-ins continue to reduce. That has generally been the number-one crime in our city since I've been on the Police Department, 2002. Last year, that ended down, and we're still seeing a downward trend in that. That also has a strong public education component, and we want to continue to promote that, particularly securing any weapons that may be in your vehicle. Of all of our zones, every zone but two is seeing a reduction in crimes against persons. We have a slight increase in Zone One and a slight increase in Zone Six. We always are adjusting resources to make sure that we're targeting those that we can and put just resources in those areas. We still need the public's help, because the presence of guns and a moment of anger is something that has vexed this city and other cities across the country, and that's where we still continue to see individuals helping us in those areas. I do want to bring to your attention a very discouraging trend, something we have not seen since I've been the chief of police, but it certainly has been prevalent this year so far. As you all know, every year that I've, every time I've stood before this body, escalating disputes has always been the number-one motivator for homicide in our city. That has changed in the first quarter of this year. We are now seeing domestic violence occurrences, individuals that are harmed by individuals they are in a relationship with, or related to, or live in the same locality, the same house or the same apartment. Just to give you a snapshot, as we concluded Week 18 last year, only two of our homicides were 4.7% had been domestic in nature. So far this year, 12, or a full 30% of our homicide have been domestic in nature. Additional challenges, the number that are occurring inside in a bulge where we can't patrol, is slightly above this time last year. This time last year was 26% of our homicides was inside a residence, someplace we cannot be, when we protect our city, but so far this year, 35% are inside. So when we look to our community, the At Promise Centers, our faith-based community, the Victims' Witness Assistance Program, this is where we need their help, because we cannot be in living rooms and homes to be able to keep the peace. But we see domestic violence being the number-one motivator for homicide, and it takes the place of domestic dispute as a unique area that is outside the purview of the Police Department. If we look back this time in 2022, we were at 62 homicides in our city, and so we do see an overall 24-month drop, and then over this time last year. The number-one motivators for homicides in the city that we can impact are in the area of gang members committing crimes, drugs being dealt in our city, as well as guns in the wrong hands, and I'm going to touch on those real quickly right now. In the first quarter, we became aware of what we believed was a significant drug-dealing operation that was being operated out of the northern neighborhoods of our city. That was developed through a work of officers on a traffic stop, and they believed they had located a location where drugs were being brought into the city from outside of Atlanta, and then distributed to all across our community, touching almost every zone. We did execute a search warrant at that location, and you can see on the pictures that we provided on the screening of reports, over 600 pounds of marijuana was taken out of that one apartment, and $100,000 in currency seized at that one location. Had we not developed the case that we did, what eventually would have happened, ladies and gentlemen, was someone heavily armed would come to take that amount of drugs and to seize that amount of money. And so the work that's done by a dedicated group of individuals that every day go out to shut down drug-dealing operations is part of the Atlanta Police Department. That investigation led us to two other locations, one of them right here in the city, as well as one in a neighboring jurisdiction, where we were able to get the next shipment of drugs before it could go out to a park, go out to a school, or a neighborhood. Again, of our focus on the gangs, guns, and drugs. You see pictures there of firearms. We almost always see heavy firepower in these locations that we shut down, that are used to either take someone else's drugs, or money, or to be able to take over territory. So I want to commend the men and women of the Police Department for continuing their work. Every fifth day, on average, we're shutting down a drug-dealing operation. Then that is harm that never touches a home, a family, a park in each of your districts that you represent. Want to talk about a challenge we need, we have around juvenile offenses that are occurring. This is so important, why the mayor's continued a second year of the youth, and also the work we need from the judicial system. I hear from many of you the challenge of car break-ins in your districts, and this department works very, very hard to make sure they arrest those that are breaking into cars. I'm going to bring an individual to your attention, a 17-year-old, who has been arrested six times by this department since December 11th. Six times since December 11th, we've arrested the same individual. Five of those times, he was breaking into cars, and in one of those times, he was carrying a gun in the city that he could not possess. That is six times that we have placed before a court to this county an individual that we need their assistance with. It's not always lock them up, throw away the key. Sometimes it's intervention programs. Sometimes it's assistance for the family, but something needs to be done. And I don't know if it's the seventh or the eighth time that this department arrests someone for doing the same crime for the action of the courts, but we are going to continue to do our job to make sure individuals that are targeting your districts and your constituents with crime, that we continue to take them into custody and place them before court. My also concern is this, throughout the last year and a half, I've seen numerous occasions where a citizen interrupts their car being broken into, and there's an exchange of gunfire. So it's just not holding someone accountable for a property crime. It's asking the courts to take action so we do not have an act of gun violence. And a young individual who needs the assistance and the help of society is not harmed in an exchange of gunfire. an exchange of gunfire, or someone that is responding to their car getting broken into is harmed as well. The majority of these arrests all occurred in Zone 2, one occurred in Zone 1. But this is the work that your department does. Almost every one of these arrests was in the dark of night by the police department. We continue to address the large number of guns that are in the wrong hands and guns that have been modified to be fully automatic by placing switches on them. This is the work of our Violence Interdiction Section. This is the work of our gang unit, tracking an individual that we knew to be wanted, knew to be affiliated with a gang, and was showing around the guns that he had. We actually have a picture of him on your screen practicing with his gun in a local gun range. He couldn't possess it. It was illegal to have. It was modified to cause great harm, and he was wanted by the police. And the work of your department to find this individual and take him into custody before he could harm in a nightclub or before he could harm in a park is the work of this police department, is the effort we're going to continue doing. And I want to commend our analysts. We have a growing number of civilian analysts that do a phenomenal job to identify who it could be harming our community. I want to thank all of our partners for ensuring that we had a safe spring break right here in Atlanta. This is everyone that operated a youth center. This is everyone that had youth activities at their faith community, at their civic organization, to make sure that we did not see the challenges here in Atlanta. This is our partnership with the Atlanta Public Schools, KIP Academy, and many others. As we approached spring break, we deployed to many parks and areas in the city we felt individuals would be gathering, and we doubled down on our youth engagement resources through Powell and our App Promise Centers. And I'm pleased to report absent one incident at the beginning of spring break at a park, individuals on a basketball court, we had a safe spring break here in the city. That is everyone ensuring that it was a safe break, just not the Atlanta Police Department. I want to thank everyone for their efforts in that space as well. During spring break, we focused on gangs, guns, and drugs in the city, knowing that we had a number of children that would be in our parks, that we would have a number of kids at locations throughout the city, and what we didn't want was a gang conflict to happen and to cause harm to those young individuals. And so you see on your screen efforts during the spring break week of this department, also working with the District Attorney's Office, the Sheriff of Fulton County, the Attorney General's Office, and our federal partners to focus on areas that we felt gang activity was likely present and generally around drug-dealing operations. During that time, we removed 16 firearms from the street. If you can look at those photographs, ladies and gentlemen, these are high-capacity weapons that were floating around on our streets. We made 17 arrests and charged 17 of those individuals with being a member of a gang that we felt their gang affiliation, and we alleged before a judge was responsible for criminal activity in our city. The efforts to make sure gun violence doesn't happen is occurring all the time by this police department, by all of our divisions, and also through the partnerships we've developed across the region and with the state. This body was made aware of concerns around our airport. It is the world's busiest, it's the world's most efficient, and it is the world's safest airport of concerns around auto thefts. And I want to make you each aware of two arrests that we have made that has dramatically dropped the number of vehicles that were being stolen in that area. One was an individual on your screen. You're seeing Mr. Matthew Freeman. He would loiter on the curb. He's the center person in your photograph, right by the white truck. He'd just wait for one moment of opportunity when someone was distracted to be able to take a vehicle. This is a video. If we were playing it for you, you would see just a few minutes, Matthew Freeman would take advantage of a distracted traveler, and he would drive away in that white truck. That's the fourth time he did that. And we were able to locate Mr. Freeman, take him into custody, and he is currently in the Clayton County Jail, waiting to be held responsible for those crimes. And we're happy to report that curbside thefts have dropped with Mr. Freeman's arrest. So thank you, officers of the Airport Section and your investigators for your work on that, and just citizens who are excited to go on vacation or reclaim that loved one at the curb. Just be aware. Lock the door, turn the car off. A few moments of being safe will make sure that you don't have to wait for the police department to recover your vehicle and get it back for you. I want to make another, you remember about two years ago, I stood before this body and made you aware of an approaching trend where you could take a small device and steal a Kia and a Hyundai, and it led to a lot of thefts. Well, that is starting to subside, but now we're starting to see a surge in thefts around certain Dodge and GM products where you can use a programming device to program a master key. And that is what we're seeing to be one of the prevailing trends at the airport. As individuals are parking to travel, for time, it may be a few days before they notice a theft has occurred. And so we are seeing that pattern occurring at the airport where an individual uses this device, and you have a still shot there of that occurring. Here's how much damage one individual, actually two in this case, can do with stealing vehicles. Our department became aware, as we were looking at the trends at the airport, that we likely had a crew underway, in fact, a very prolific auto theft ring that was targeting the airport, and we began to think that was probably more larger than that. We became aware that a Dodge TRX was being sold online for the low, low price of around $7,000. And so members of the committee and those in this room, as well as those maybe viewing, know that's a very good price to buy a brand-new TRX. And so we wanted to buy that vehicle. And so we set up an arrangement to acquire the vehicle to see if it was just as good a deal as we could. And when we met with the individuals who you have on your screen, Mr. Pinkston, as well as Mr. Grimes, it come to find out that vehicle was too good to be true. It was stolen. It was stolen right from our airport. We were also able to recover the devices and other items to be able to connect them to multiple car thefts. These individuals are responsible, this department alleges, to 64 vehicles stolen across the region. And of those 64 vehicles, 42 of them were stolen right here in the city of Atlanta. You have on the screen the number of vehicles that were stolen by each zone, as well as from the airport. And so because of the hard work of the investigators of this department, we were able to take both of those individuals safely into custody. Mr. Grimes is still in custody, and Mr. Pinkston has posted bond and is now out on bail. So this department will continue to work very hard to hold people accountable. We just asked the judges to please take note of individuals we're placing in your courtroom. One arrest can have a significant impact on safety in our city, and this is an example that shows you what two individuals can do over a period of time of... And if you get a very good deal online, please let us know about it. We'll try to give you some guidance on that as well. Mentioned this last week when we presented our budget proposal at Finance and Exec, and this is the work of the department around illegal gaming operations, and I want to explain the why behind this endeavor. Because when we look at all the crime in Atlanta, one may ask, well, why does the police department care about gambling? Well, here's why your department cares about gambling, particularly on gaming machines. That when it's occurring, there's cash payouts occurring. And so that should not be happening, and people are getting cash, which they should not be receiving by virtue of the rules of the Georgia Lottery Commission. Other individuals are taking note of that. And so in the parking lot, a short distance away, even in the convenience store, robberies are occurring at gunpoint to take that cash, and sometimes individuals are being shot during that robbery. And so we partnered with the Georgia Bureau of Investigation, the Georgia Lottery Commission, and we've been working to shut down irresponsible business owners in the city that are not abiding by the lottery commission rules. Last year, we have shut down five of these locations. So far this year, we've done four, and most recently, on five, Cleveland Avenue, back on April the 3rd, that location was shut down as well, removing their ability to have gaming machines inside. We will continue to do that. We won't tell you when you're coming, but I'm just putting you on notice. If you're an irresponsible business owner in this city and you are contributing to crime by not following the Georgia Lottery rules and allowing cash payouts, you are going to meet the Atlanta Police Department, and we will work with our state partners to deprive you of that ability to endanger your neighborhood. Just quickly on Kia again, we will thank you all whenever we do Kia events, and we want to thank the mayor for building the relationship with Kia to have the pop-up shops here in the city so individuals do not have to leave to get their cars, the software upgrades that they need. We had a very successful event in April when we had over 160 cars with the upgrade occurred. We had protect, we had 100 protectors put on the vehicles. A number of efforts were done to be able to protect individuals so their cars can't be taken, and we have continued to pass out over 1,200 anti-theft devices, clubs on steering wheels. And we still have others, so if we can partner with any of your offices to be able to keep your neighborhoods and your constituents safe, we would like to do so. We hope you continue to see more and more Atlanta police cars out in your neighborhoods. We want to thank the mayor for initiating the Take Home Program and just an overall refresh of our fleet. When the mayor took office, 70% of the fleet was past life cycle. There were times we had more officers in the roll-call room than we had vehicles to put them in. And so we had to be very creative with how we went to the neighborhoods. You can see through the program, we continue to roll out more and more vehicles as it grows through the months. 87 in 2022, 148 last year, 170 of those are sitting in driveways and homes right here in the city, 92 so far this year, 66 are take homes. We continue to equip those units that may be called back at a moment's notice into Atlanta to assist in this critical situation. They are being fully provided with take-home programs, and it was the number-one reason for a while that officers left us to go to an adjoining agency to work is because they had to take home procurate again for their officers. So I want to thank the mayor and this body for continuing to support those efforts. It helps us in time of natural disaster, times that we want to mobilize the department for maximum visibility and response, being able to have multiple vehicles gives us the opportunity to do that. We want to always be about the business of being trusted by the communities that we protect. That is through a number of structured, formal and informal measures to be able to engage the community. Want to commend everyone that came out and supported our Easter celebration at the App Promise Center on Cameron Alexander. We had a number of officers and community partners, officers that reside in the city, that were present to help in that event. We're always working in three areas, working to promote education, economic opportunity in the stability of a home. Those are the three best crime fighters, and we are endeavoring to do that each and every day as much as we go after individuals that may be committing crimes here. Also, continue to support the mayor through his efforts with the inaugural Youth Town Hall, which occurred at the gathering spot here in Atlanta, gave the opportunity for us to have really good quality engagement conversations with our youth, understanding what their concerns are, being able to take that back to ensure that we're communicating and acting properly, and to be able to make sure individuals are aware of what their rights are and what they should expect anytime they're encountered by American law enforcement, but specifically the Atlanta Police Department. As we get close to the conclusion of this presentation, I might add about three more things. Number one is the support of our officers. We have a number of officers that serve on this department and civilian team members that are from the country of Haiti, may have immigrated from here or just be second-generation Americans. And we became aware, as we watched the unrest in that country, that a number of officers were protecting Atlanta and worried about their loved ones back at home. And so we partnered with the mayor's Office of International and Immigrant Affairs with the new Public Safety Behavioral Health Wellness Unit, as well as the local Haitian consulate to be able to provide a resource day where we brought our officers together, fed them authentic Haitian food, and had a time of resource sharing so they knew what they could do to be connected to care for their family back in Haiti, loved ones that still may be there. And we opened this for the entire city. We had representatives from Department of Public Works, Atlanta Fire Rescue, Office of Finance, the mayor's office, and others that came to take part in that day. And so I want to thank everyone that made this a very successful event, and so we help our officers and our civilian team members as they carry the burdens of this city. The Public Safety Training Center continues to be on schedule. Please be watching your inbox. You all should be receiving an invitation as we get closer to the month of December for the cutting ribbon of that campus. We are very, very excited. Provided just about three photographs here for you. You can see on your far right, the training station for Atlanta Fire Rescue being built, an important resource to make sure for classrooms and real-life environment that the paramedic aspects of this fire department, their rescueability is being built. Right next to it is a state-of-the-art rescue simulation area known as a burn tower. They simulate the rescue of individuals in smoking environments or high levels that is going in right next door. In the middle, you see a high-level view of the academic and leadership buildings being built. This is all of the classroom spaces that we need to be very good at what we do. And on the left, you see just part of the driving skills pad that we're going in place that every single department will be utilizing. So for those of you that serve on this committee, an FEC, we are very confident that over time, you will start seeing the number of at-fault accidents reduced, the number of workman comp can reduce, as we have a comprehensive, safe-driving program for all city areas. Also being built is a mounted stables, canine facility in our simulation center that is coming online. Please continue to support us in keeping Atlanta safe. We are now over 20,000 registered cameras and 18,000 integrated cameras. This is certainly the neighborhood watch of the 21st century, allows us to be trusted, allows us to be effective in your community, identifying individuals that may want to do harm, making sure we have the right person before a court, and that we're doing our best to keep Atlanta safe. So, Madam Chair, that is your recorded report out. We hope the information was of value to this body, but certainly open for any questions that the group may have.
Thanks, Chief. Also, just to commend your staff on the briefings, the many briefings that we have been receiving during these meetings. We like to thank them for those reports. They have been extremely helpful. Also, the communications have been going really, really well. Next, do we have any questions or concerns? We have two board members speaking that would like to ask questions. The Honorable Amir Farroki, followed by the Honorable Antonio Lewis.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Chief Sherbaum, for the presentation. Always appreciate the thoroughness and the pace with which you presented. Two, one question, or two questions. First is Slide 3 on the homicide information through Week 18. You noted the significant increase in domestic homicides. You categorized them. I'm curious if that, A, mirrors a trend that we see nationally, to the extent you've had a chance to look at it, if not, just curious. And B, if you have any data on the types of domestic relationships that those homicides reflect, is it man, woman, 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 man, man, whatever the combination may be? I'd just be curious if we have that data and if this is a national trend.
So some cities across the country are reporting seeing this. I would almost say we're a little lagging behind. When COVID first hit, other cities saw very sharp increases quickly in domestic violence. And while we saw some, we didn't see the prevalence around homicides that we're seeing now. And I don't have the data in front of me, Councilmember. We have seen brothers kill brothers. We've seen wives and girlfriends harm their significant other, both male and female. There's not just one category that I could tell you this is where we need to put our efforts. I can tell you that anger is a problem. And when a person just can't walk away or can't navigate it, and then there's a gun close by, it's tragedy. And in this case, it's just not individuals that are fighting over parking space or fighting over the last piece of something they wanted to buy pizza. I mean, I can go on and on, the ridiculousness around this. And so it's concerning, Councilmember, and I wish we could simplify it to the point that we knew what the answer was. But we're seeing all facets of the family unit and the domestic structure of where this is occurring.
And you notice any other trends or common threads, like time of day, day of week, presence of alcohol or other drugs that may be at play?
Well, alcohol and drugs is certainly a factor, but not in all of them. But certainly alcohol has certainly been present in many of these when we've seen the violence used.
And then, two quick questions. One, the airport car thefts. You indicated there was that one individual who had stolen a handful of cars. And then you noted that since his arrest, those thefts have plummeted. Was this the sole perpetrator of those types of auto thefts, kind of curbside auto thefts?
Well, for curbside auto thefts, we believe he was the curbside. We believe the crew that we took out was a significant player in the cars that are being stolen from the parking decks. I believe there's about six decks at the airport, but it's just not the ability to arrest them. We've been working closely with airport management, as well as Major Callier at the airport. We've modified patrols. We've placed more private security guards in the area. There's been technology enhancements at the gates to be able to remove that welcome mat from that area. So while we are investigating and arresting, we're just making it difficult all the way around for you to try to do this at the airport.
And were these thefts just someone getting out to give their loved one a hug goodbye or putting luggage in the back, and someone jumps in and drives off? Or was someone actually leaving the vehicle to walk into the concourse?
No, they were very close by, sir. In fact, on that one, we were showing you the drivers at the back tailgate.
And last, could you share offline how many citations have been issued for loud exhaust in the last six months in the city and by zone?
We will get that for you, sir.
Thank you.
Next, the Honorable Antonio Lewis.
Chief, thank you so much for this report, and thank you also for the bi-weekly reports. It's been extremely informative. I also want to say thank you from myself and the community for pushing forward on the Rodney Thompson case. The entire community has been eyes-on on that, so we're reporting back to the family right now as we speak. So we're reporting back to the family right now as we speak. The young man that you spoke about that went to jail six times at 17, because I know it's a little different as an experience. At 17, they go to, they're no longer a juvenile. And so is he being still, did he just turn 17?
I'll get you the date and then maybe, Councilmember, that some of those, he did go to juvenile detention, YDC, and some of those, he went to Fulton County. We'll get you exactly when his birth date was. And maybe that all six were as an adult. I will find that out before you get that to you back.
Thank you, because I want to, that means we got a system error there in which we need to have to fix in that case. The next thing you talked about with the decrease in Kia, the how we got better with Kias. The chop shop on Cleveland Avenue in Metropolitan says different. Yesterday, I was on Metropolitan Parkway and I was getting my tire fixed on my own car. I walked to the backyard of the mechanic shop where I was getting my tire fixed. We look over the balance and we see a Kia getting dropped off right there at that chop shop that I keep bringing up to you all. And so do we, there are different ways in which we can fight car theft. And I think that one way is to get rid of the chop shop that's in Atlanta, Georgia, on the same exact street as the Zone 3 Police Precinct, less than a mile away.
Would not disagree with you, Councilmember. When you alerted your Zone Commander of this chop shop, an investigation was opened immediately. There is an investigation going on. As soon as we arrive at probable cause to enter with a search warrant or to make an arrest, your department will be doing that. This is an department that turns a blind eye to crime. And so once we have been able to go before a judge and lay down a set of facts and circumstances that arrives to their level of agreement that there's probable cause, we will be paying them a visit. And if they're watching, as they were watching last week at FAC, we're going to come and shut you down, we're going to put you in jail if they're watching. And so this is their opportunity to stop. And if they don't, they will soon meet the Atlanta Police Department, sir.
There are Kias and Hyundays lined up the drive. As you walk down the driveway, you could just see them like crushed all the way down the drive. And there are about 100 Kias or Hyundays in that spot right now. And to see somebody drop it off in front of the Councilmember and in front of a complaining mechanic shop, who told me that he saw this shop grade down the land before they started their operation. So I truly need some help and I think it put a true dent in car theft in Atlanta if young people stealing cars now have to go to another city or another location to drop them off because they're doing it right on the same street with the police precinct.
And we're aware of the allegation, Councilmember. We're looking on it. And I do know you had concerns as well, Councilmember, about the homicide on Judy Lane.
Yes.
And we do, that is a very active case. We believe those individuals probably knew each other. And so that case has good advancement in it. And I would anticipate just as much as we did getting an arrest warrant, been very short order on Cleveland Avenue, you're likely to see us announcing an arrest warrant on that case in the near future, sir.
Thank you. And one last thing, thank you for the Five Cleveland Avenue. The store across the street is owned by the same person, same thing, right across the street. And so Five Cleveland Avenue, I know is still open because I rode past it this morning, but the store across the street, I didn't go into Five Cleveland Avenue, so I don't know if the gambling machines are still operating, but the same owner owns the same exact store across the street and I know people are back there gambling. So, thank you.
Welcome, sir.
Next, the Honorable Dustin Hillis.
Thank you Chairman Moon, and thank you Chief Sherbaum for the report. Just first, before the questions or requests, touching on you mentioned, and some of our public commentators mentioned the need for streetlights. You know, that is through our partner, Georgia Power. The city doesn't actually own any streetlights, but I just wanted to point out that this city council and the Phase 2 of Light Up the Night approved the second phase of that, which I am told at least by Georgia Power, covers a significant portion of District 9 and District 12 since we were kind of left out of the first phase. It was $3.9 million more streetlights in those areas, so hopefully that will get implemented quickly. Another item, I believe I brought this up in your budget presentation, but, and maybe this is a request to you and Mr. Freeman, also maybe a request to the Police Foundation. I know I've asked for and have received them multiple times through my tenure, but would like an updated map of our camera locations and license plate reader locations. That includes current ones, ones that may be funded but not quite installed or online yet, and then also any proposed locations that APD or APF have come up with that may need funding. So if I can get that, it'd be appreciated. The other kind of just question on your spring break plan of action, on the kind of your focus areas, the thing that sticks out to me and, you know, had this conversation before is, out of the focus areas, I'm not going to say only one of these is a public place, but only one of these is a public piece of property. So how do you all coordinate with, you know, Atlantic Station, a lot of people don't know this, but all of Atlantic Station is private property, even 17th Street. So how do you all coordinate, especially during these high crime times in the summer plan, to make sure that they are also pulling their weight with their private security, with their off-duty APD officers, et cetera? Atlantic Station, Green Bar, Camp Creek, Lenox Mall.
Yes, sir. We start with coordinating with whoever the head of security is there. It's different for each location. Some do hire off-duty officers, some do not. They have solely private security. So it's meaning to know that they are aware spring break is approaching. We review with them what we've seen historically occurring at their locations. And ideally, and this is certainly the case in most locations, we've had this conversation already when we start seeing issues around youth gathering, but we'll meet with them. Spring break's approaching, how many security guards we have working, what does your curfew policy look like? How are you with your extra job officers? How are you with your cameras? Are they integrated into the center? And so that will be the first phase of conversation. We also monitor our social media very, very closely. As you all may recall, Friday before spring break, there was supposed to be a citywide senior skip day that was supposed to, everyone was supposed to congregate in one park right here in the city. And so we worked very aggressively to communicate with the schools, it's not appropriate, we're not going to, can't have this. We put officers in that park of the city and we were able to make sure that didn't happen. So those same analysts that are detecting a call for a senior skip day are also talking to each of the establishments that's on that list and their head of security, hey, we're seeing a call together on your location. We know that there's been a dispute and this group could handle there. So it's a lot of information sharing with these organizations. And as we are on patrol, that our officers are passing by, passing through to complement the private security and the off-duty resources that are there.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions or concerns? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you all very much.
Very well done.
Thank you, ma'am.
Our next presentation, Code Enforcement Quarterly Update.
I'm not as polished as our Chief of Police in my public speaking, but I'm going to give it my best shot here today. So first, let me start out by saying, and just to piggyback off of what our chief spoke on, Madam Chair, I want to thank you publicly for attending our police memorial service last week and the words that you spoke. I mean, who would have known a few days later, we could have easily had three names added to that police memorial? So thank you very much for your attendance and your words. So we're going to go ahead and get started today. I'm Captain Jeff Baxter. I'm here behalf of Director Daphne Tally, Director of our Code Enforcement Section. And Mr. Hillis, as you mentioned, I just want to acknowledge that we do have a new Chief Administrative Officer, Marshall Freeman. I just want to acknowledge him as our new leader and we appreciate everything that he brings to the table, as you mentioned.
Is he here today?
He is here today, yes, ma'am.
Please stand, please now. Name again?
Marshall Freeman.
Marshall Freeman, thank you so much. Welcome, welcome.
Yeah, he takes over for Mr. Peter Amen as our new Chief Administrative Officer.
Thank you, Mr., thank you so much.
Proud to have his leadership with us. So we'll go ahead and get started today. Our agenda will consist of the following items. We'll go ahead and get into it, starting about with our staffing levels. So based on FY '24 budget, the Code Enforcement Section was allocated 92 total positions. So that's our, 92 is our total required staff. That breakdown you see is based on 88 professional staff and our four sworn officers that we have with us here in the section. A snapshot of what we have currently is we have 57 of those positions filled with 35 of those vacant. So let me just add a caveat to that. So when you look at that 35, I know that number looks big, but a lot of that 35 consists of some extra help positions that were created in the FY '24 budget that we're still working on getting hired. And so those were some additional extra help positions that pushed up those vacancies. And so that's where that 35 comes from. As we look at the breakdown related to staffing with our code enforcement officers, so those are the boots-on-the-ground code enforcement officers that are out there each day in your districts, looking for those violations. We currently have 25 filled positions. And just to put that in perspective, if you go back to Q1 of '23, we had nine. So we look at the nine that we had Q1 '23 with the 25 that we have now, Q1 '24, and obviously that's a significant difference in our manpower as it relates to boots on the ground. And then when we break down the housing demolition officer position, we have a total of three. One we currently have filled, one has a tentative start date coming up, and then the other one we're actively looking to recruit. Next, we're going to get into the matrix of our complaint intake versus our complaint resolution. So if you look at this matrix here, we're looking at Q1 '23 versus Q1 '24 as it relates to our complaint intake. Our complaint intakes primarily reside within 311. Most people who make complaints to code enforcement do so via 311, but we also receive those complaints through you, our city council, constituent services, the mayor's office and members of the police department. You look at that number, we're up Q1 '24 versus Q1 '23, but what I would like to note is that in addition to the complaint intake numbers that you see, now that we have code enforcement officers that are able to be out in your districts being proactive as opposed to reactive, they're able to themselves identify properties that need to be in compliance and that contributes to that number of complaint intake numbers. And so those officers that are out there now, being able to be proactive indicates an increase that we've seen in our Q1 so far this year and accounts for that 36% increase in filed complaints. Next, you can see when we talk about our complaint resolution, so our complaint resolution is simply any part of our process in being able to get individuals to comply with bringing their properties into compliance. And so there's a couple of different categories that are there listed below that make up what is a resolution and what that can mean. And you can see those there. And so you can see those numbers related to '23 versus '24. And again, you know, the 13% decrease that you see there in terms of resolution, I think we'll be able to pick that up as we continue to work to pick that up. I think those numbers were based on, that 13% comes from the increase in actual code enforcement officers spotting things on the ground, putting it into the system and then us catching up with the resolution. And so we hope to see those numbers also trend as well. So hand in hand with our resolution and our intake are inspections. And so obviously, the inspection process is a big part of code enforcement, getting out there and taking a look at what the complaints are that come in. You can take a look, Q1, again, Q1 '23 versus Q1 '24. We've had a 9% increase in our inspection activity as it relates to the beginning of the year here. Again, I think a lot of that can be attributed to the increase in our actual code enforcement officer staffing. And then you can also look at those re-inspections and those court re-inspections. You know, those numbers trend about the same, Q1 versus Q1 '23, '24, but we do have that 9% increase in our inspections. So next, we'll talk about our compliance resolution in terms of our abatement activity. We're now talking about our fiscal year, current fiscal year '24. So if you take a look, you can see the breakdown there where we've had those 45 demolitions executed as compared to 48 in 2023 FY. You can look at the 12 clean and closed that been executed so far, and we look at our 33 clean and closes. A couple of things to note is that we continue to work with the Department of Procurement and working on soliciting for new contractors to be able to work on some of our demolitions. We continue to work with the Department of Procurement to create those contracts and the wording that has to be used and created in order to expand soliciting for new contractors. We feel confident that by the end of this year, we'll be able to bring some new contractors onboard, which will increase our bandwidth and being able to complete demolitions in a timely manner. Couple of things to note, too. You can see, we had three administrative interim hearings that had to be canceled as it relates to 2023, you can see there. So in December, City Hall was closed, so we could not complete an interim hearing then. And then you look at February and March, that was due to the hack at Fulton County. And that hack at Fulton County did not allow us to do our title examinations that were needed to proceed in an interim hearing. And so that's kind of the decrease and the reasoning behind that, which was out of our So next, we're going to move into a very important piece of what we've moved into, the space we've moved into with our Safe and Secure Housing Initiative. And so, you know, two years ago, the mayor entered into his Safe and Secure Housing Initiative sparked by what took place at 900 Newtown Circle and Forest Cove. And so understanding that regardless of what district you live in, regardless of what your zip code is, regardless of how much money that you make, nobody deserves to live in substandard living conditions in the seat of Atlanta. Our Code Enforcement Section is all in on that, and that's why we jumped in as the lead partner in this initiative. I would like to use as an example, so we look at 900 Newtown Circles, the impetus that got everything started with this initiative. And we have a breakdown here of the timeline. And of course, I'm happy to say that right now, we are in the process of demolition when it comes to 900 Newtown Circles. So that demolition process has started and things are being knocked down to the ground. But if you look back historically, you go back to 2018 and you look at the number of citations that have been issued over and over again, looking at the nuisance petition that was filed, going through all the legal wrangling and maneuvering with the property owners, and then the city taking in upon themselves to have to relocate over 200 tenants, something that the city has never been in the space of, has never done before. And so that was a huge undertaking by many, many different people within city government to relocate those folks. And so the idea is that we never want to be in that space again. We never want to have a property get to the point to where we have another Forest Cove. And so it's very important that we take part in this initiative. These are just a couple of current pictures here of our demolition that's currently underway. And as we talk about Forest Cove, you know, Forest Cove has been a thorn in the side. You know, that actual property is located within District 1, Councilmember Winston's district. And so I know that that's been a thorn in the side there in District 1 for many, many years. And so it's great to be able to have some conclusion on that. These are just a few accomplishments as it relates to where we are currently with our Safe and Secure Housing Initiative. You can see there that we've conducted 27 joint details, or what we like to call interventions when it comes to multifamily properties. We've checked on over 3,800 units as it relates to these interventions that we've done. Over 24 violations have been found. And I would like to at this time, thank the Solicitor's Office for their increase in attorneys that are now assigned to the Safe and Secure Housing Initiative that do nothing but bring our cases to court as it relates to what we find during these details. I'd also like to thank, and I think this is an important point to make, we now have the Atlanta Fire Rescue Department as part of our partners when we go out and do these apartment interventions. And I would like to recognize for those of you that know Claudia Nash, so Ms. Nash with the Atlanta Fire Rescue Department, she's a godsend, she's great. I reached out to her and she now joins us on all of our details. And she gets out there with the fire recruits and they knock on every single door of every single apartment complex we go to, to make sure that there are working smoke alarms in those apartments and fire extinguishers for those folks that are living there. So I would like to acknowledge her and the folks of the Atlanta Fire Rescue Department for joining the Safe and Secure for joining the Safe and Secure Housing Initiative. So that's it. That's just a quick snapshot of our Q1 24 report out. At this time, if you have any questions, be happy to answer those.
The Honorable Dustin Hillis.
Thank you, Chairwoman Boone. Thank you, Captain. I thought you did pretty well with your presentation.
I'm not as good as the chief, but I try, sir. Yeah.
On the housing demolition officers, thankful to see we have one that's starting May 23rd on that one vacant position. Is that a funded position? And if so, is it posted? Any progress there?
Yeah, so that was an FY 24 budget-funded position. So that position is funded. It is currently posted on the city's website, and we're accepting applications.
Great. On the... I thought I had another one in here, but I guess not. Do have one more. On the Safe and Secure Housing Initiative, without getting in too far into the weeds because of legal issues and details, I know there are a number of properties on that initiative, but we'd just like an update, if you can provide that or Mr. English can, about Woodland Heights and where they are with bringing that property into compliance and how often they get inspections, re-inspections, et cetera.
Yeah, so I can tell you that Woodland Heights is a property that it's in our crosshairs when it comes to this initiative. I know there have been a number of violations that have been detected, and we are working with our solicitors' office. But I would like to bring up Mr. English. I'd also like to note that code enforcement officer English has been promoted to the... He's the program manager for the Safe and Secure Housing Initiative within the code enforcement section. He does an excellent job. And so with that promotion, I'll let him speak on Woodland Heights.
All right. Congratulations, Mr. English.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Woodland Heights is scheduled for an arraignment on Wednesday, May the 29th, 2024, courtroom 5A. This is Chief Judge Portis' courtroom.
May 29?
Wednesday, May 29. And we're scheduled to conduct the court reinspection on Thursday, May the 23rd. So on May the 23rd, we'll go out, and we will inspect the entire property for every code violation for which they were cited.
Good. Thank you very much for your work there. That concludes my questions. Madam Chair.
The Honorable Mary Norwood, followed by the Honorable Antonio Lewis.
When I looked at this slide with all the tires, and we've been dealing with people coming and dumping tires in the city forever, with our new camera system, do we have any cameras that are tracking who is actually entering these problem areas where we know that the tires are accumulating like this?
Right, so I can tell you with the 900 Newtown Circle demolition and cleanup, it's a huge property. And so people took advantage of the fact that it was going out of business and started to dump there. As a result, cameras have been placed as part of our safety and security plan while the demolition goes on to try to catch some of those individuals. I know that there are cameras there. Those cameras are monitored by the Video Integration Center. And so we're doing our best to try to catch those that are coming out there and dumping. We're almost using that as maybe like a trap or somewhere where people think they can come there and dump, and hopefully, we can get some tag numbers and some good descriptions to follow up on. But as part of the safety plan, those cameras are out there for that specific reason. I can also tell you that the timeline that we're looking at for this demolition is about five months. It's going to take five months to clean that property up and get it all torn down.
Got it. Well, thank you. I'm glad we're taking that proactive stance because I know that the guys, whomever is doing this, they know where those properties are, not just Forest Cove.
Exactly.
But if there's one or two ways in or out, it sure would be nice to be for them to know that somebody's watching them.
Absolutely. And I can also say that our zone commanders, our zone majors are also aware of those hotspots where people dump illegally. And I do know that they work to get cameras deployed in those areas that they identify as well.
Good. Thank you, sir.
The Honorable Antonio Lewis.
First, I want to say thank you for your report today. And my questions are surrounding around Pavilion Place. I love the work that you all deal with Forest Cove, making sure we took care of people as much as we could. But a lot of folks are displaced from that community now, and they're trying to find their way back into the city of Atlanta. I always bring up Pavilion Place because Pavilion Place has the potential of becoming Forest Cove if we don't step in right now. And so I know I've been bringing this up for a while. Are they in court right now? Can you give me any updates on it?
So they are in court. Again, that's another property that is a... That has our alarm bells ringing. So they are in our crosshairs. They are currently in court. And I will let Mr. English give you the specifics on exactly what that court process looks like.
Congratulations, Mr. English. We're going to be... We're going to lose you in our part of the city, but I respect where you're going. I enjoyed walking around with you that one time, walking through the mud, and I see your dedication.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
The work.
Yeah, so 532 Cleveland Avenue, Southwest Pavilion Place Apartments. That's actually the very first preventive detail that we conducted back in August of 2022. We went out, we did collaborative detail with some other departments with the city, and we cited them for every code violation we observed there at the time. They did comply on those violations. They went to court. They were assessed fines. Once we... The method that we use is once an apartment complex comes completely into compliance, we put it in a category of comply and monitoring, meaning although they are complied, as you know, properties, they fall back out of compliance. So that's one that we were monitoring. After they became into... After they came into compliance, we monitored their property, and we noticed an influx of additional complaints, interior inspections at their property. So we went back out, and that was one of the first details that we conducted under the Safe and Secure Housing Initiative. It's also one of the first properties where the first property, what we did, two details. We keep a running list of all the properties where we go and the date that we do the inspections. Although they comply, once we monitor them, we go back out, and we did find additional code violations. Once the tenant occupants knew that code enforcement was out, we were speaking with the tenants, we were educating them, letting them know that, hey, code enforcement is here. You can reach out to us if you have any issues inside the unit. You don't have to fear retaliation against the apartment complex because we're going to come in, and we're going to cite them for every unit that's out of compliance, and we're going to hold them accountable, bringing them in court. We did that during the second detail. They did go to court, and they are in the process of now pending paying the fines for the most recent court visit that they conducted. Like I said, that property is monitoring, so we will keep an eye on an influx of code violations at the property. We routinely also, we don't just wait for tenant occupants to call code enforcement. We do proactive follow-ups at that location as well. That means we go out to make sure that although we cited them for junk trash and debris or failure to properly or in a timely fashion remove the trash, debris, the dumpster at the premises over there, we go out there and we ensure that they are continuing doing that because if not, we'll bring them back in court. And we've had the instance with Pavilion Place Apartments. We also go out because we placard the junk vehicles. If there's an instance where we go back out and we conduct proactive details or inspections at the location, we monitor to see, okay, all the vehicles were removed on the previous detail, but are they getting comfortable now and relaxed and say, okay, well, code enforcement, we've complied that, so now we can start back doing what we were doing before or whatever. So that's something else that we monitor. Like I said, Pavilion Places at the top of our radar with comply and monitoring and making sure that they are continuing to cut the grass on a routine basis, remove the junk trash and debris on a routine basis. If there's an instance where windows are broken, which there has been in the past, the windows are broken, are they repairing those violations in a timely fashion? If there's the instance where there's some type of interior structure violations or even exterior structure violations, are they addressing those in a timely manner, and are the tenants having their issues, their work orders being addressed in a timely fashion as well?
I want to say thank you, and I can see the training that you've received. And because you're wearing a tie now, I hope you're able to train some folks to be like you and like Ms. Louse out in the field. Thank you again for your report.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Looks like we saw you on the news a couple of weeks ago. What was that about?
That was with Mayor Dickens, his initiative to encourage more city employees to ride martyr. I took advantage of that.
That was great.
I took advantage of that, and I got the martyr car, and I rode martyr back and forth to work every day. And now I encourage my own team members, my own coworkers, to also utilize martyr as well.
Very good. Very good. Very good. I do have a concern. The members at Salem Bible Church on Baker Road are complaining regarding a home on the right. I know it's already in your shop, but it is open. It's been open for about three to four weeks, and they would like as a precaution to the community and the young people, if we could have it closed. It is on Baker Road. I'm not sure of the address, but it is on the opposite side of the church. And it is open, but it does have placards on it. Baker Road Northwest.
Gotcha. We'll certainly take that back and take a look. Absolutely.
Any more questions or concerns? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well done. We have a special guest in the audience. I would like for him to stand and come up and just tell us a little bit about the school he attends. Mr. Hines Hurley is a Boy Scout. He is getting his citizenship and community badge. He's an Eagle Scout. Come on up, Hines. Welcome to the Public Safety Committee.
My name is Hines. I'm not quite an Eagle Scout, but I'm working towards that right now. I'm shooting for getting it next January or February. And so, yeah, just a little bit about Boy Scouts. It's great. I love it. I think that it's a great program. I've learned a lot. Leadership, teaching other people, it's very valuable, and I think it's very important. Citizenship in the community is pretty cool. I'm working on that now, and this is one of the requirements to come to a city council meeting or a school board meeting and just learn about what's happening in the community. And then I'll talk to my counselor about it. And there's a few other requirements to the merit badge, but this is a big one.
Well, we are so proud of you, and we encourage other young people to come up and learn about this process. Whose district do you live in?
That's a tough question. Which school do you go to?
I go to a school... Well, it's really small. It's a hybrid school, so I go to school two days a week, and then I homeschool the other three.
Okay. And so what neighborhood?
It's around Westminster.
Okay. Probably Paces Neighborhood Association. That means I'm your council district person.
The Honorable Mary Norwood is your council member.
And I want you to know, I am married to an Eagle Scout, and my brother is an Eagle Scout, so we're an Eagle Scout kind of family, and it's such an important thing to do. And then you get to go to Philmont. That's really fun. So good for you. We're glad to have you here.
I've already been to Philmont. That's amazing.
There you are. There you are. This is out west, and it is a fabulous experience. So Hines, welcome. We're glad to have you here, and I think my chief of staff is going to give you a tour as soon as y'all are through with us. Good to see you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Hines.
Thank you so much.
Okay, welcome. Next, our present agenda.
Madam Chair, this takes us to Section G resolutions, claims with favorable and unfavorable
I'll make a motion to approve the favorable claims 1 through 22, moved by the Honorable Antonio Lewis, seconded by the Honorable Wes Morland.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. These items are found favorable.
I'll make a motion to adverse the unfavorable claims 23 through 46, moved by the Honorable Dustin Hillis, Vice Chair, seconded by the Honorable Matt Wes Morland. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Six J's, zero N's. The unfavorable claims have been adverse. This takes us to Section H, ordinance for first reading. Item number 12401268, an ordinance by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee, authorizing the mayor's disney to execute an agreement for RFPCS MCA 2311-1240144, Probation Management Services for Judicial Correction Services LLC, on behalf of the Municipal Court of Atlanta for a term of one year with two one-year renewal options. All funds generated under this agreement shall be deposited into the applicable general fund revenue accounts and HC fund liability accounts and for other purposes. This takes us to our regular agenda, Section I, ordinance for second reading. Item number 22401194, an ordinance by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee to ratify services rendered in connection with contract listed herein Communications Consulting with Lexicon Strategies LLC. In accordance with Section 2-1163, subsection C of Article 10, Procurement and Real Estate Code of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, authorizing the mayor's disney to extend the agreement by one year retroactively effective February 7, 2024 through February 6, 2025, and to add one-year renewal option on behalf of the Atlanta Police Department in the amount not to exceed $120,000.00. All contract work be charged to and paid from the fund, department, organization, and account numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
Is there a motion to approve? Moved by the Honorable Vice Chair Dustin Hillis, seconded by the Honorable Matt Wes
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Six J's, zero N's, items favorable. Item number 32401220, an ordinance by Councilmember Marcy Callier Overtree, waiving Article 10, Section 2-1546 of the Procurement Code of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, authorizing the mayor or his disney on behalf of the City of Atlanta, Atlanta Police Department to enter into a fourth amendment to a lease agreement with KDI Atlanta Mall LLC, a limited liability company for approximately 1,927 square feet of office space located at 2841 Greenbrow Parkway, Southwest Suite X336, Atlanta, Georgia, for the Atlanta Police Department Zone for Greenbrow Mall Mini Precinct Commencing on April 1, 2024, and ending on March 31, 2025, authorizing the expenditure to be charged to and paid from accounts listed herein and for other purposes. Madam Chair, this item will need to be amended. The amendment attaches Exhibit A, which is the lease agreement to the legislation.
Motion to amend by the Honorable Matt Wes Morland, seconded by the Honorable Vice Chair Dustin Hillis. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Six J's, zero N's, item has been amended.
Motion to approve the amended item, seconded by the Honorable Matt Wes Morland. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Six J's, zero N's, item is favorable as amended. Madam Chair, item four requires an amendment. The amendment changes the caption.
Moved by the Honorable Dustin Hillis, seconded by the Honorable Matt Wes Morland.
Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed. Six J's, zero N's, item is amended. The amendment changes the location and the caption to from Historic Fourth Ward to Historic Fourth Ward Park. Item number four, 2401221, an ordinance by Councilmember Amir Farroki, as amended by Public Safety and Legal Administration, in order to amend Chapter 110, Article 3, Division 1, Section 110-75 of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances to restrict amplified sound at gated events and outdoor events occurring between the hours of 8:00 PM through 11:00 PM on Sunday through Thursday at Historic Fourth Ward Park and for other purposes.
Motion to approve.
Moved by the Honorable Amir Farroki. Moved by the Honorable Amir Farroki, seconded by the Honorable Vice Chair Dustin Hillis. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. One moment. Vote is closed, six J's, zero N's, this item is favorable as amended. Madam Chair, we need to refer this item to CDHS since the impacted departments are the Department of Parks and Recreation and the, and the mayor's office of special events. The motion should be, the request of motion is to refer.
Second.
Moved by the Honorable Vice Chair Dustin Hillis, seconded by the Honorable Amir Farroki. Please open the vote.
One moment. The vote is open. The vote is closed, six J's, zero N's, this item has been referred to CDHS. This takes us to Section J resolutions. Madam Chair, can we take items five through seven together as a block?
Please proceed.
Item number five, twenty-four R three-six-zero, zero, seven, a resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration authorizing the settlement of all claims against defendant of City of Atlanta in the case of Ariel Carson versus City of Atlanta, Georgia, civil action file number listed herein, pending in the State Court of Fulton County, Georgia, an amount of nine, ninety thousand dollars and zero cents, authorizing the settled amount to be charged to and paid from accounts listed herein, authorizing the chief financial officer to distribute the settled amount and for other purposes. Item number six, twenty-four R three-six-zero-eight, a resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee, authorizing a settled amount of, against defendants in the case of David Abari, AKA Oluwafi Caio, Abari versus Jonathan Wright, the City of Atlanta Civil Action File Number listed herein, pending in the magistrate court of Fulton County, Georgia, an amount of eleven thousand dollars and zero cents, authorizing the settled amount to be charged to and paid from accounts listed herein, authorizing the chief financial officer to distribute the settled amount and for other purposes. Item number seven, twenty-four R three-six-zero-nine, a resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee, authorizing the settled amount of all claims against City of Atlanta in the case of Mary Jordan versus City of Atlanta Civil Action File Number listed herein, pending in the United States District Court for the Northern District of Georgia in the amount of five hundred fifty thousand dollars and zero cents, authorizing the settlement amount to be charged to and paid from the account numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
Ms. Robinson from our law department, regarding these items, we, we were briefed earlier this morning.
Yes, and these items are settlement resolutions in which the law department has, has litigated these matters and then recommends these settlements as set forth therein in the best interest of the city of Atlanta. There was some specific discussion concerning number seven, that is an employment matter, then litigated since twenty twenty for an incident which occurred in twenty eighteen concerning allegations of age discrimination. Having litigated this considerably through a motion for summary judgment, the recommended settlement amount is recommended by the city attorney as in the best interest of the city of Atlanta. This is inclusive of any attorney's fees.
Moved by the Honorable Matt Wes Morland, seconded by the Honorable Dustin Hillis. And we'd like to have an executive session on that on Monday, please. Yes, thank you, no, no. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, six J's, zero N's, these items are favorable. Item number eight, twenty-four R three-six-one-zero, a resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee to amend Resolution twenty-four R thirty-one fifty-two and authorize payment in amount of nine thousand nine hundred fifty-three dollars and thirty-four cents in the settlement of the property damage claim Johnny Simon has against the City of Atlanta and for other purposes.
Move approval, seconded by the Honorable Dustin Hillis, Vice Chair. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, six J's, zero N's, this item is favorable. Item number nine, twenty-four R three-six-one-one, a resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the mayor or his designated to enter into amendment number one for agreement listed herein with C, with GCIC search tool replacement system with data max applied technologies incorporated on behalf of the Atlanta Police Department to add Atlanta information management, the Atlanta Fire and Rescue Department, the Solicitor's Office and the Municipal Court has authorized users to list funding strings for authorized users and to add additional funding to the annual contract amount, all contract work be charged to and paid from the fund department, organization and account numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
Moved by the Honorable Dustin Hillis, Vice Chair, seconded by the Honorable Antonio Lewis. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed, six J's, zero N's, this item is favorable. Madam Chair, we have one item coming off held, item number twenty on page twelve, might I sound the caption?
Yes.
Item number twenty, twenty-three oh, one, six, eight, nine, an ordinance by Councilmember Dustin Hillis as substituted by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee to amend Chapter ten, Article two, Section ten dash ninety-four A of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances so as to provide exemption from the distance requirements listed in Section ten dash eighty-eight of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances for one convention centers selling alcohol, alcoholic beverages for consumption of, on the premises located at seventeen oh five Commerce Drive, Atlanta, Georgia, and for other purposes.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by the Honorable Dustin Hillis, Vice Chair, seconded by the Honorable Amir Farroki. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed, six J's, zero N's, this item is favorable. Madam Chair, we have one walk-in item, might I sound?
Mr. Johnson, we'd like to revisit number seven and move it forward with no recommendation so that we can have an executive session on that item. We do have some concerns. Motion to reconsider by the Honorable Matt Wes Morland, seconded by the Honorable Mary Norwood. Please open the vote. Motion to reconsider, item seven.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, six J's, zero N's, this item has been reconsidered. Madam Chair, might I sound the caption for public record? Item number seven, twenty-four R three-six-zero-nine, a resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the settled amount of all claims against the City of Atlanta in the case of Mary Jordan versus City of Atlanta, civil action file number listed herein, pending in the United States District Court for the Northern District of Georgia, an amount of five hundred fifty thousand dollars and zero cents, authorizing the settlement amount to be charged to and paid from accounts listed herein and for other purposes.
Move forward with no recommendation by the Honorable Matt Wes Morland, seconded by the Honorable Vice Chair Dustin Hillis. Please open the vote.
One moment. Madam Chair, can you sound the mover and the seconder?
The Honorable Dustin, no, the Honorable Matt Wes Morland was the mover, the second was the Honorable Dustin Hillis, Vice Chair.
Thank you. The vote is open. The vote is closed, six J's, zero N's, this item is forwarded with no recommendation. This takes us back to our walk-in, Madam Chair, might I sound the caption?
Yes.
Elm's number three-five-three-six-six, a resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the mayor or his designated to execute an agreement for RFPCS MCA two-three-one-one dash one-two-four-zero-one-one, probation management services with judicial correction services LLC, on behalf of the Municipal Court of Atlanta for a term of one year with two, one-year renewal options, all funds generated under this agreement shall be deposited into the applicable general fund revenue accounts and agency fund liability accounts and for other purposes.
Move approval.
Second.
Seconded by the Honorable Vice Chair Dustin Hillis. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, six J's, zero N's, this item is favorable. Madam Chair, that concludes our legislative items for today.
Do we have any questions, concerns or any, anything? This meeting is adjourned, thank you.